I'd like to call the order of September 22, 2021, Superintendent for Education. And hold on, please.
Anderson?
Here.
Bad, Garrett Stuckey?
Here.
Palagian?
Here.
Good.
Garrett. This is Ryan. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.2 is the adoption of the Seagull's agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Good. Anderson?
Yes.
Bad, Garrett Stuckey?
Yes.
Palagian?
Yes.
Yes. Item 1.3 is the approval of the August 25, 2021 meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to revoke those minutes, please?
So moved. Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad, Garrett Stuckey?
Yes.
Palagian?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Item 1.4 is the approval of the September 8, 2021 meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to revoke those minutes, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so was it, did you start?
Central.
Okay. I hope I don't sound like a troublemaker.
All right, Anderson?
Yes.
Bad, Garrett Stuckey?
Yes.
Palagian?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Okay, section two, public participation. Item 2.1 is S E A report out. Now, I don't think we have anybody from the S E A. Item 2.2, S C E A report out. Okay, item 2.3 is pre-arranged public speakers. We have five this evening. I'll just go in order. All of you will have three minutes. First of all, please use the podium. You're going to have to turn on the microphone. Please address your comments to the board. Let's open state your name and address, please. So first up, we have Jeff Patchik, Janas.
Thank you again, Superintendent Hook, the members of the school board, for providing me a few minutes to speak. I am Jeff Patchik, Janas, resident of Clearport Township at 1612 Greenfield. Most of us have heard the admonitions of our nation's founders about mob rule. Founder James Madison described the mob as a group of, quote, "united," united, actuated by some common impulsive passion adverse to the rights of other citizens or to the permanent aggregate interest of the community. Madison describes a mob as a crowd that demands its own selfish interests, a met rather than what benefits the whole community, and warns about the small minorities who make themselves disproportionately large, quickly filling up space and yelling louder, jeering more cynically, grinning more callously, and appearing angrier than everyone else. They do this to make leaders afraid of what is responsible, well-reasoned, to do what is responsible, well-reasoned to the right moral citizens they serve. Last month's board meeting, we saw an attempt at mob rule. I witnessed yelling, jeering, grinning, mob attempting to shout down speakers they disagreed with and doting the superintendent and board members to speak to bad-faith questions that no answer could satisfy because the crowd was not present to listen to people's ideas but to force their rhetorical ideas into others. It was also a stunt orchestrated and organized by a known partisan agitator who doesn't live in our district. And it worked. After the mob attacked, Warren County Superintendent signed onto a pilot, a scheme, that looks like it's designed to placate the Warren mob rather than to keep our Boulder students safe and in school. I call this pilot a scheme because it makes the procedures in-play more convoluted and less. It reduces masking when masking has proven to help reduce the spread of COVID-19, and it creates even more conditions that must be evaluated in determining whether quarantine will be required. All our health agencies, international, federal, local, the WHO, CDC, the Ohio Department of Health, our own Warren County Health Department advise universal indoor masking to reduce the spread of a dangerous and deadly disease. Last week, Mike Demline, our state's governor, with medical center officials throughout the state pleaded on television with tears in eyes for our schools to require masks to reduce the strain on our candidates, clinics, and hospitals. Rather than a pilot and experiment that wages the safety and education of our children, it is far less risky, more responsible, and far simpler to require masks. Even Superintendent Hook's report last month pointed out that, following county guidelines, the mask by itself keeps asymptomatic kids in school, no quarantine required. Make masks a requirement in all schools and only those students with symptoms who need to stay at home. This is the response leadership our schools need. Leadership that does not act as a mean-spiritedness or the mob pounding on its door. Leadership that addresses challenges head-on rather than brushing things under the rug against the head of the problems before they begin crises. Leadership that picks the simplest solution and keeps everyone safe and learning over the convenient yet convoluted schemes. Leadership that always, always puts in safety while being of our students first.
Okay. Miss Stephanie Bendeman?
My name is Stephanie Bendeman. I live at 35 Fryport. And I would rather not be here. I think most of the people here would rather not be here. But I'm here again. I'm tired, but I'm here again because we have important things that concern the most precious thing in my life: my sons, my children. I think most of us, regardless of what side of the aisle we belong, would agree that our kids are the most important thing we have. Some days, not as much. Some, they're teenagers and it's tough, but every day, they are the most precious thing I got. And I'm here to talk to you about the duty of the school board. I don't really need to preach to you guys. You know what the duties, you know what your duties are. I'm sure that you guys thought long in heart before you ran for school board because it can't be fun right now to be a school board member. We're seeing the news that it's crazy, where we saw last meeting, people were attacked. It is not fun, but you have chosen to do this. And I think the first thing that a school board has to do is to make sure our kids are getting educated. I would say that's probably your most important duty. And I think you're doing a great job. I'm happy with, I have a son that graduated a couple of years ago, who's doing great over at Ohio State. I have a son that chose to go remote last year. That was a little bit tough, but he made it because of the staff that we have here that pulled all of them through. Last year wasn't fun, I'm not going to lie. It was not fun. It wasn't fun at my house, that's for sure. But the next, this big thing, I think that a school board and a superintendent is cask with, is keeping our students safe. I already told you, my boys are my most precious asset I got. And I'm glad that you passed the mask mandate for the kids that aren't old enough to get vaccinated. Absolutely the right thing to do. Thank you for keeping them safe. Now I want to talk about the older kids and your staff. They need to be protected by wearing masks. If you make masks optional, very few of our students, I'll be honest with you, my son does not wear a mask. They're not going to wear a mask. He's in high school. Do you know how much fun they make of kids that are wearing masks? You've all been to high school, you know how it is. If a kid wears a mask, he's the weird person, or she's the weird person. I want you to make them mandatory. I'm old enough to remember when seat belts weren't mandatory and nobody wore them. I want them mandatory. I'm impressed with all your credentials. I know you guys are college graduates. Are we done?
Yep.
Okay. Please make masks mandatory. Thank you.
Next this evening, we have Ms. Melissa Campion.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Hook. My name is Melissa Campion. My pronouns are she/her, and I live at 20 Oak Mill here in Springbrough. I have three children in this district. They are ninth grade, third grade, and preschool. We met here six years ago, drawn by the school district, under advisement of a good friend who works at the University of Cincinnati in the honors program. He told us many of his honors students come from here. We love this district. Our kids have thrived in this district. But what I need to talk to you about tonight is masks. Last meeting, I heard a lot of people mention the effects of masks on the special needs students. I need to share my experience. Our youngest is in the special needs preschool program. He's got many needs. We see an occupational therapist, a speech therapist, a developmental pediatrician, and now we've worked with the school. Each of those people have shared with me that masks are hindering my child's progress. They make things much more difficult for him. But each of his doctors, therapists have all encouraged his mask-wearing because ultimately, what hurt his progress more was the two weeks of school he missed because his brother got COVID. In the first month of school, he missed two weeks. There was no private therapy, there was no school therapy, there was no socialization. I worry daily about my children's health, how it affected my kids with asthma, about those long-term side effects that we just don't know enough about, and about the effects in this school, both socially and academically. There are still too many unknowns with COVID to risk it. We need universal masking, pre-K through 12th grade, without religious exemption. We need to keep these kids in school, in person, and healthy so that they are not losing progress. We need to come together as a community to protect these kids' education and health, and the best way we can do that is by asking all students and staff to wear a mask. The health department is overwhelmed. I got a letter for contact tracing seven days after his positive result. I got a call about how to quarantine 14 days after his positive result. We need to step up and make sure that we are doing everything that we can to protect our students and staff. I would like to see you guys be more open with numbers. Tell us how many students and staff members are absent each day. We know that the spotting, the testing is spotty. People aren't getting tested, it's not being reported. I think the numbers will tell us. Thank you.
Okay, next, this evening, we have Mr. Brian Redder. Can I drop that? Don't I drop that now?
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Hook. My name is Brian Redder. My pronouns are he/her. I live at 35 Charadad Trace in Great Harms. I have a proud father, a junior. Almost four years ago, my wife and I became prominent former foster parents and wanted to be in a strong school system. We wanted to give the kids coming to our home the best educational support we could get in a place we knew that they would be safe and have a strong educational environment. I have frequently attended our school board meetings, and the board is not managing literally behavior. People are yelling, taunting, not saying their addresses, et cetera, during these business meetings. Our community deserves more guidance from the people elected to run these meetings. Quote, "All those that requested to speak, both pre-arranged and not, were given time to do so," end quote. This is not an adequate response from leadership. Although speakers were given a three-minute time slot, many of them would not be able to speak for the full time due to being interrupted by the captain. I cannot trust that the board is able to maintain order in our schools when they cannot even manage to maintain order in their meetings. I would like to read a portion of the policies that were adopted by the board. Policy 5517.01, "The Board of Education is committed to providing a safe, positive, productive, and nurturing educational environment for all of its students," end quote. Why does this the board bring up? You have the responsibility to help provide an education to our students in a safe, positive, productive, and nurturing environment. These meetings are open to all community members, including our students. When my daughter approached me wanting to speak at the night's board meeting, her first concern was the backlash she had received from the audience. I have been told this many times by many other students and even adults who would like to stand up and speak but are afraid to do so having behaved the audience at the last few meetings. Why dare you, the board and superintendent, not provide a safe, positive, productive, and nurturing educational environment during all essential school functions in which our students are in attendance? Every parent student wants a safe educational environment, and the board is expected to consult experts and advocate for it. The board is calling victims to bullying, intimidation, and being strong-armed by loud minority in our community. You need to provide direction in leadership, follow the science, and the professionals who are making recommendations on how to provide a safe, productive environment. You are not elected to be neutral. You were elected to guide districts with strong leadership. Thank you.
Okay, our last pre-arranged speaker is Ms. Kaylee Redder.
Hello, board members and Superintendent Hook. My name is Kaylee Redder. I live at 35 Charadad Trace. My pronouns are she/her, and I am a junior at Springbrough High School. I want to start off with a quote from an email of the Warren County Health District and Springbrough City Schools. Your child's health is of utmost importance. The school system and coordination with the Warren County Health District is working to provide a low-risk environment for the students and staff while continuing to offer excellent education opportunities," end quote. I want to start off by saying that I do not appreciate being lied to. You say that our health is of utmost importance and that you want to create a low-risk environment where you yet to require masks in grades seven through 12. It has been scientifically proven that masks work. Just look at our local statistics of last week. In the four different Springbrough school buildings that were fully masked, there were nine confirmed cases, while in one unmasked building alone, there were also nine confirmed cases. I see and hear people saying that making children wear masks is the same as child abuse. Proud to being placed in foster care, I was a victim of actual child abuse. So hearing things like this going around that are saying that schools requiring masks should be reported for child abuse is absurd and ridiculous. I have been vaccinated, and I have chosen to wear masks since the beginning of the year. Why am I the one making the choice to make a lower-risk environment for myself and others when you have the responsibility and the capability to do it for us? Let me tell you about what happened when I went to the school nurse last Thursday. The nurse was following Springbrough's guidelines, and when I presented the four main symptoms of COVID, the nurse did not require me to get tested and stay at home in quarantine. She did not even require me to go home. I made the decision to go home and get a test. I thought all students' health, including mine, was of utmost importance, and you're trying to make a low-risk environment. How are you making a low-risk environment when I could have been sent back to class with COVID or come back the next day with COVID because I was not required to take a test due to the guidelines that you have put in place? I chose to speak tonight because I wanted my voice to be heard, to give a perspective of a student at Springbrough Schools. I was at the last board meeting and was moved to speak this time. Thank you for taking the time to hear what I have to say. If you would like to address anything that I've said or have any questions for me, I'm happy to do so now.
Okay. We're going to move to section 2.4. This is public participation that is not on a work session item, it's in section three. So if anybody's speaking on sections four, seven, do so now. Okay. We are going to move into the work session items. So this is item 3.1. This is work session public participation. Would anyone like to speak on any of the work session items? Okay. We're going to move to item 3.2. This is the update on how to part of the public pilot program by Mr. Hook.
Can I ask you a quick question? Will they be given an opportunity to speak after each work session?
Yes.
Thank you. President Good, members of the board. Just a little background to Friday, August 27.
Do you need the microphone, please? Thank you.
On Friday, August 27, all of the Warren County superintendents had met and had been talking for a couple of weeks about ideas that we thought were important to try to improve the number of kids that were in school. We drafted a letter on that day and had delivered to the offices of Governor Goliath McCott and to the Ohio Department of Health Director, Dr. Vanderhoff. We specifically expressed our concerns about quarantine protocols and specifically about the number of children placed by the health department in quarantine due to exposure to others with COVID. Most of our county schools were seeing large numbers of quarantined students and staff. In fact, this led directly to the temporary closure of two districts within our own county. In the vast majority of cases, these students did not become ill. We believed then, as we do now, that the best place for the students is in school, in front of our teachers, and not only for their academic success but for our children's mental health as well. So we came up with a simple solution. That any child that was deemed exposed would wear a mask but remain in school throughout the duration of quarantine unless they became symptomatic, in which case they would be isolated. We heard back from the governor, this certainly is that next Monday. The following week, on Wednesday, September 1, we were in a Zoom meeting with Dr. Vanderhoff, the director of the health department, and a couple of their epidemiologists that have been working on this really nonstop since then. They're making several requirements, it's evolved. So here we are today, and what I can tell you that, the process moving forward, and it's not totally defined in every area, and you'll probably start to see information coming out anywhere from Friday to Monday from all schools in Warren County, but here's where we are, we sit right now with the safe pilot program. We've been given the green light. So students who are exposed, consider exposed, but do not have any symptoms or illness, and who would test negative for the illness should remain in school face-to-face. Specifically, they would have to have a mask on the time they come in, diagnosed, obviously, not whether you maintain social distance and test negative on days twice, on day three and on day five through seven, again, without developing any symptoms. This is a pilot for the academic day, and this is some of the other pieces that they put into it. So it's a top-did program entirely. Nobody is required to be in it, so you have to sign up for it if, in fact, your child would be considered exposed. By signing in, then you'll be given a state-provided test kit. It's a telehealth kit, so it's not one that you can just go buy. It has to be this particular kit. It's about a 25-minute process. They can take that home, they go through the process. Whoever the nurse is on the other end of the telehealth confirms a negative test, they email back to the parent. It's negative, you email it to us, and you stay in the program. It's as simple as that. Some schools are going to try to do testing. I don't think that's possible at this point in time. And remember, this is a pilot for the academic school day. This is some of the other things that came out from ODH. Students are still considered quarantined. It's just a different way of dealing with quarantine, quarantining during a school day. This is not a task in extra regulars, so as soon as the school day is done, you're still technically at home in quarantine. So again, this is really all about keeping kids in school as much as you can, providing another option. As part of this pilot, the Warren County E S C has hired a dozen nurses, one for each district, to administer this program. Warren County schools have absorbed, so far, weren't all our schools, ours included, have absorbed these duties that are normally handled by the health department, such as contact tracing during this pandemic, and our nurses are overwhelmed. And one of the issues that I had, as have others, is we can't do more. We can't do more of that. So having an additional body, additional person that will handle it is greatly appreciated. I do want to thank the Warren County Board of Commissioners who agreed to provide the funding through their CARES dollars for a rescue plan, their PAC dollars, so the E S C can hire these nurses. Ours will begin on, will be on campus here the 29th, next Wednesday, I believe, 29th. So how long will this test, this be monitored? Because part of this is providing the data to the state on how well it works, deciding on its efficacy, and expanding on whether it will be a decision made by the Department of Health in the governor's office. They indicate that they want to gather data from us, the county schools, for follow-up. So the light will roll out, and we have a huge meeting, I want to say Friday, with the E S C, and we're bringing our pandemic response team to that. We're all excited to help to make sure that we have all of our questions answered, make sure we get our protocols in place, and then we will send out the information to our families no later than Monday to kind of outline it, but you got the gist of what it is right now. We will likely start, one of the things they said is start small, so we're going to start with our 712 population. We will likely start that on Friday. We have to get the person in, we have to take her out of the building, introduce her to our nurses, get her set up with her location, et cetera. We would likely then, after that first whole week, move to K, the K through six group, Monday the 11th. Okay? So the goal, then, obviously, is from the 11th through the remainder of the pilot, they'll tell us when that. then, obviously, is from the 11th through the remainder of the pilot, they'll tell us when that concludes. We'll just be gathering data, hopefully, that will keep our kids in school, keeping them safe. So, you know, that's it in general. That information, like I said, will be forwarded to parents no later than Monday. So that's kind of where it's at right now. I certainly think that my recommendation today would be not to change the protocols that we have in place, that we want to keep our data as clean as possible because this has a chance to go statewide. Could matter differently, it's another way to keep kids in school, so. We had one call week, like to see several call weeks. And so, that's kind of where it's at.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. I've got a couple of questions. So is the governor, the Ohio Department of Health, and Warren County Health Department, are they aware of this pilot?
What?
Are they aware that this pilot is going on?
Oh, gosh, it was approved, yes.
Are they supportive?
Very. With, if they don't, it's been their approval that we were waiting on with the adjustments from our original composition to them. The epidemiologists walked us through what they wanted. Initially, they wanted, they were talking about testing daily, and they were done three times a day, and then they kind of settled on what would be appropriate and doable. So that's where we're at now. We got, we just got the green light from ODH. And our health department has been having a meeting with us with them as well.
So as, so as the pilots answer right now, policy procedural wise, the protocols as we see them today, has the governor, the Ohio Department of Health, or the Warren County Health Department expressed concern that this will impact health or safety of students consistently?
No, they, they think it was, I was, no, short answer, no. They think that with those pieces in place, that we can do it safely and if in fact, which we have found all through last year, in the data that we collected, and even so far this year, the vast majority of our students that are being exposed right now are not as much in school as they are at home or other events out about. We saw considerable spikes last year after holidays. But just doing some of the contact tracing we did last year and so far early this year, a lot of its siblings have come down, or better, adult, with their rounds. So, no, they were very open and felt that it was a great idea that massaging it with their epidemiologist, Dr. Vanderhoff, finally signed off on it. They're excited about it, thank you. So much so, and we didn't even know that Governor Dewine was going to have a press conference about it. But hey, after talking to Dr. Vanderhoff, we didn't even know about it. So we were inundated with questions for me and, you know, we have, we got one found. It's just simple. I think they're pretty excited about it.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Can I clarify something, because I'm a little confused. I understand the pilot procedures you've laid out for the older population. I guess I'm a little confused about younger populations, because they're already wearing masks and quarantine rules.
Well, it'd be, be in.
What's that?
Well, okay.
Well, I guess if you're wearing a mask, I guess I'm under like, thinking sort of normal sort of quarantine sort of flow would work, so I guess I'm confused as to where the program kicks in.
Well, you don't necessarily, obviously, expose the school.
Okay, so this could cover exposures.
It could, it could. Yeah, that's one question that we already proposed. And we should have answers by Friday. It may not, they may not allow us to go that far, because, but I don't know that. But the reality is, we also have some students that have exemptions, mask exemptions at the elementary, and those are the ones that are predominantly, when they've been exposed, are getting under quarantine. But you, you can't be in the pilot with an exemption. So you'd have to still opt in, but it's, again, entirely a parent's choice.
So if you have those students that have those exemptions and aren't wearing masks or if they're exposed to bludgeon or something like that, like, could have been inside when they were masks were down, it's like, okay, does that understand, like, the population would be, since the younger kids.
And that could have been, but I think some of those exposures didn't add much. Where it's a little bit difficult to distance.
I've got a few questions. So for the validity of the pilot, so who within the district, let's say that my child is not vaccinated, I choose to do the test and then have them wear the mask, who is ensuring that my student's wearing the mask as they go to nine different class periods, that mine has to be one that has to be masked?
We have a shared, we have a shared database between the schools and the, I'm going to call her Nurse Judy, that's her name, who will actually be coordinating that information to the schools.
So all the teachers will be given a list of all this?
Well, attendance will, attendance, and then the nurses within each building, which also will include the administrators.
But will the teachers? Because if the teachers don't have it, then nobody would know who has to have a mask and who doesn't.
Right. Right. It'll be, you know, we'll certainly add that information, we'll push it to them.
To the teachers?
Well, either that, or they'll be, we'll put a list out that they can access every day.
So it's sent to the teacher, I mean, for valid test, probably would be?
I understand that. Not everything has been worked out, that's why it's not in place yet. So that's one of the many questions. And one of the things I've said all along is the logistics is what's going to make this work or not work. And so we have, that's all we've done since this thing started, is try to figure out every logistical issue. So right now, we have, we decided on a Google spreadsheet that can be shared. We can share with as many people as we want. Whether it's good for the teacher, or we just have a list, secondary list that goes to a particular building, maybe similar. It needs to be easy for teachers, they don't need to look at every, every person that's at it. They just need to be seeing the kids that are within their own building.
Within their own classroom. And we can't have it.
Or even in their classroom, yes.
Within their own classroom. I'm just saying, if we're, because of the pilot, we want it to be valid.
Try to, yeah. And I imagine there'll be some things that we find, oop, what do we do, fix this way? That, I imagine, there'll be that, we're trying to, like I said, we have a lot of people's eyes on this. And so we had a meeting with principals, picked up a few more ideas and thoughts. So it's kind of layout, and it's coming together fairly quickly now. And so I think we're about in a position to launch it, so.
So teachers are each getting a list of who needs to have masks on. Is there, of the, is it 10 Warren County districts? How many Warren County districts? Is this, I'm just wondering, what is the state looking for to consider a success? I think what's good, I mean, it's, we need to be looking at how can we keep our kids in school? I'm just wondering, like, our district is preschool through sixth grade with masks. All Warren County districts are not like that. Will they be tearing apart the data like that to look at, like, our district versus, I think it's, I think 11 is masks all the way through 12th grade? Will they be looking at the data like that to determine?
Sure, I'm sure they will. I would imagine they will. I don't, I'm not part of ODH, but that's, I assume they'll make the decision whether it goes beyond the pilot.
So do you know what success looks like for them? Have they shared that?
I would, usually, my guess is how many appointments are presented to those kids that are quarantined that stay negative? Because I'm sure that that's one of the bigger things they want to see. I think they're also wondering a little bit about how much is the HABR, should we give them a, if I can get on it? I do know that there's some legislation that's going, working its way through the legislature, so. I think it's just being able to have some options to keep kids in school. I don't know if that ended in their thinking or not. I think it was purely research based.
So for our plan as a district, since we had stated when we put masks into place, we had stated we would look at this every 30 days. So our plan is to move forward with this pilot and then look at it 30 days and look at our data, since last week our data was better, and look at it.
See if we can keep training.
See if it's trending.
I think that's, I think.
I do have two other questions around masking. One is, and I had, I'm hoping that there would be a follow-up with this, because I talked with you about this. I have a junior higher, and on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the number was 13, but on Friday, when the data came out, the number was 10. And so the numbers are just not matching up. And I know you said that potentially we were going to go from Thursday to Thursday just so that our staff wasn't having to be there until eight o'clock at night, which I fully support. That still doesn't address the 13 in the email that I received versus the 10 in the data. So I'm just wondering what we found with that? And, because I don't, I want the community to be able to trust the data that's out there. And I just saw that myself, because I have a junior higher, and I didn't, when I started hearing the questions, I went myself and counted out the emails.
Right. Well, first of all, we have nothing to gain by getting false information. That does nothing. So that's not happening. The difference is, you've got several people at different points in time pushing, pushing numbers. One, we have to send to the county health department at a specific time, a certain time during the week towards Friday. We also have people that we find out Friday and even later that they've tested positive, and then there's people that we have added to the list. We add it as soon as we get it, because it would be spreadsheet. But it doesn't always, when we have to pull it off to get it up onto the website, from the time that happens to the time we give everybody accounted for, it may get pushed, some of that data gets pushed to Monday. So sometimes there's a little bit of discrepancy there. But it's not that we didn't count somebody, or they weren't included. They just get caught back up then on Monday. And some of it depends a little bit on how many we got hit with on Friday. Earlier, earlier in the month, when you're heavy days. We had contact tracing, everybody was running around with contact tracing. The high school, we've got three assistants and others that help. And some other buildings, we have one assistant that's helping. And so just having windows hit the books and hit our data person that just compiled and posted can be different at different times. We eventually had the exact numbers, as you start pulling them down at the end of the day, or not at the end of the day, but by week, by week. So what we report then to the health department, if we miss somebody in this particular, towards the end of Friday, we would pick them on the following week. But now, we had talked about trying to cut it off on Thursday, I don't know if the health department was real happy with that thought. So there may be a little discrepancy there, but it's because of who, what, when, when filing, when it gets pushed from the nurse to the, to our data person that pushes it up on the website. So that's, that's what the discrepancy is, if there's any. So it's not trying to adjust numbers.
I just would encourage us to. It's the actual opposite, though, because it's not that Fridays didn't get caught because it had already been sent out to all of us as parents. The nine plus two plus two was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So that all had already gone out to all of us, it wasn't not catching Fridays. Because on Friday, it was sent out. So I just, I think that it puts trust in all of us. If we're getting emails, we know they're counted because we got an email saying you've had an exposure, you've had a test positive in your school. So I get it that we're not trying to hide this, but it doesn't make sense to us when we're, when, I wouldn't have counted, but I started seeing it on social media, and I'm like, really? So I went back, because I have a kid in the district, so that's the only, I get it. I don't think we're trying to, but it just, we want to, we want to be fully transparent. And if we're going to go from Thursday to Thursday, then say we're going to go from Thursday to Thursday. And if I have a junior higher, I should be able to count the emails, and the numbers should be able to match up. That's it. My last question is, last meeting, I had asked about additional things that we can be doing to help our students, making sure that they're given, if they're out for two weeks, that they're given a full two weeks to make up the work and potentially not putting those zeros that's really dinging them. Also, we talked about homework help, and I know, Mrs. Stacy, you said that we had just approved the people for homework help. Homework help is not being advertised for our quarantined students, though. It's being advertised like it always has been. So if I were a parent whose student was quarantined, I wouldn't think there's going to be people there to help with what was missed during quarantine. So if we're going to look at that as something we're doing to support our students in quarantine, I would think we need to put extra teachers there and advertise it as such.
I talked to Kyle, he was giving something out to high school about the first part of that, about giving kids in county time.
Yes, that was addressed at our G L T, they mentioned the meeting with all the principals at that time. We do not, there's no difference. If you're out for five days, whatever, normally, or if you're, then you get five days once you return. If you're out for eight days, you go to quarantine versus an isolation, that makes you 10 days. You get the same number of days if you're out, even if it's quarantine. Now, we're not encouraging kids, if they can keep up, if they're in quarantine and they feel good to do so, but they're not going to be penalized for not. So that's been addressed. There were some issues, those have been, I think that's what you were, that's what you were talking about. So they were very quick on that, also. And working to make sure we address the health for students.
Okay, any other questions from the board, otherwise I'll grab the public comment.
Oh, of course.
Just go ahead and go to the voting service, take your name and address, you have three minutes.
I'm not an educator or any coach.
Can you, can you say your name and address, please?
I'm pretty sure I can do that.
Okay, then, you know what?
And retaliation, which I'm afraid of.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir, our board policy is to say your name and address. And if you don't, then we can't speak, you can't speak. Okay.
Hi, Olga Kermitzky, 105 Beasley, and I'm in Spring Grove. And I do want to thank the board for our, we've been doing, I know this is a really difficult time for all of us as parents, and I can see that the board has a lot of challenges. I know you can't make everybody happy, so I appreciate you trying to work through this. The pilot program, I'm a real fan of it, I think it's a great idea because it does exactly what it needs to do, is keep our kids in school. I do have a couple of questions, and I think. I do have a couple of questions that I think I missed a date. I think that was what I was trying to kind of, if you don't mind, just...
My goal is to, my goal is to get it picked off for secondary students, seven through twelve on October first. I know it's a Friday, but I gotta have, the nurse starts Wednesday and I need to get her around and meet people who she's going to be dealing with to get her kind of settled in and get all the other pieces logistically in place. So we're going to try to do as fast as we can. There are a couple of districts that may start eight or so earlier than us and that's, that's okay. It's because the nurse that they hired for us, in two weeks knows where she was at. So that's why we're starting as fast as we can. The only thing they said to us was just take it easy at the beginning so you don't get overwhelmed with it. So that's why I wanted to go, let's hit seven through twelve first. Nothing magical in that other, then we'll set that group and then we'll extend it down into the elementary. So following Monday, it's the eleventh, Monday, the eleventh.
So ten, eleven for the elementary. And this wouldn't be able to give us optional mask for students to be able to do optional masks with this pilot program?
No.
So we aren't following the same thing that Lebanon is doing currently, which is optional masks?
Correct. I, I don't know exactly what they're doing. They had a day from twelve for a while and then I don't know when that's...
So that just happened on Monday, then no longer?
I think they were trying to keep whatever they were doing the same when this started. Whether that exactly happens or not, I don't know.
Isn't that an option? So there's one of the things that we just discussed is that this is going to be evaluated every thirty days. I actually, I guess I missed the fact that this was going to be evaluated for masks every thirty days. Are you saying also the pilot program can be evaluated every thirty days as well?
Yeah, my guess is, from what we understand from this study is that they're going to take data then on this and make decisions. And they said probably thirty days or so and make decisions whether we're going to put their mistake, push this out to all of their districts.
Within thirty days? Or...
Exactly, they look at the data, whatever time.
And I think that...
I have no idea what they're going to do.
It doesn't sound like they're going to answer a lot of questions. I think that's a really good question about the fact that how do you know valid, how is it working? I think that's a really good question too, I mean, how do you know it's successful? So I really appreciate that. And I don't know if parents are involved or giving any suggestions in regards to what they'd like to see? Or is it all just coming from the board and the health department or the superintendent?
It's all coming from the state.
Also, it is.
We have to either do it or not.
Okay, so I did talk to the Maureen County Health Commissioner myself, and I spent about an hour and a half on the phone with him. He gave us some really great ideas that schools could potentially do, that teachers could potentially do to help, you know, with the social distancing so that maybe masks didn't have to be a priority. I don't know if that's something that I can share with you, how you want to share. But it's a really great conversation because one of the things I think we're all seeing is that people are dealing with this very differently. And sometimes people are getting sick, sometimes people aren't getting sick. We also realize that symptoms of COVID-19 are very similar to flu symptoms as well. So it's really hard to decipher, if it's flu, if it's cold. We've had that same issue with another child across the street. So clearly, there's a lot going on here. So I do appreciate you all taking the time to have this conversation. Thanks for answering the question.
Eric, name and address in three minutes.
Hi, Mrs. Morris, I live in Kirk County, township, Ole Run, St. Louis Street. I want to thank you all for your time.
What's your address?
I'm sorry, sixty-four ninety-eight Ole Run Road. I want to thank you all for your, your help. I know it's been very challenging. I've been a part of each side and I apologize. I don't really have questions for the board. I do want to make a statement to the crowd because I want to address something that you asked about.
Just make your comments to the board. It's not, we're not having a debate.
Oh, no, I'm not debating. I'm not debating.
Just make your comments to the board.
Okay, well, I just want to remind you that Noyan Stansberry, the Maureen County Health Commissioner, made a statement to the health, to the commission, local commission, that we have no intention or plan to require masks. I don't think we even have the authority to do so. But I want to agree with you that there is no reason to require them. I think it goes back to parents making that decision for their family. And if they need to, to consult with their position and make the decision that is right for their family. So to say that the health department is not behind not wearing masks is wrong, is not true. Am I concerned with also sharing children's names and their vaccine status on a piece of paper? Sharing it with all these teachers seems like a triple violation. And a lot of work for teachers, they're, they're already overwhelmed. So why can't we just leave these decisions to parents? I mean, and as far as like having to get the last meeting, there was heckling on both sides. So it seems unfair to say that the people that were against the masks heckled more or less than the ones that were for. I'll be a victim here. Thirdly, my last comment, and I've probably said this more than too often, but I have called you Superintendent Hook three times without a returned phone call. And I understand that you're a very busy man. But I also called Representative, Representative Zillinger for our local district. He called me himself within ten minutes after we called his office, spoke to me for thirty minutes about my questions, my concerns. And this is a man that represents in a district. He called me on his cell phone, in his car, on his way to the state house to represent our community. And I think it's incredibly unprofessional for a person that is in this position to not return phone calls to parents, especially at a time like this. I didn't call you once or twice, I called you three times.
Thank you. Actually, before you come up next, I want to correct one thing. It's important, we're not asking for people's vaccination statuses in this pilot. That's not true. So it's going to be...
Why they want masks?
Only the nurse has that.
We're not handing that out to the teachers.
I think what she's saying though is...
That's what she said.
Oh, because you tested it and then you have to wear a mask.
We're not...
But it's not vaccination though. It's that you had, you showed whether you tested negative and then you're wearing the mask. That's different than vaccination though.
So if someone tests positive for herpes, you post it on a piece of paper and share it with the network?
We're not sharing that.
No, I know, but there was definitely...
Man, go ahead and say your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Katie basis DePong and I live at four one five Orchard Drive in Cary. I want to thank you for all your hard work representing our schools. I have a child of two retired teachers in the area, so I appreciate all the teachers, principals and the superintendent and the board that have done. I just wanted to speak about a couple of things that you mentioned on about the pilot program. You mentioned like your nurses are overwhelmed. And I, I would gather that they are and I'm a healthcare worker and they are overwhelmed. And I'm all about bringing people together and I want to speak about how our children, you know, if you think about our community, how many of us have used Cincinnati or Dayton Children's Hospitals and tied to needing emergency sickness, going to the doctors? They are reaching out as the Ohio Children's Hospital Association is saying our children's getting that being threatened. And the reason it's being threatened is because they're being overwhelmed. And it's not just about COVID. COVID is affecting your ability to care for children. I think at the time when my daughter broke her arm and went to Dayton Children's Hospital and had to go to the E D. If you go to the E D now, you're going to be surrounded by sick children. You're going to be waiting and you're going to be not getting the quality of care. You spoke Superintendent Hook about the logistics will make it work or not work for the pilot program. People are overwhelmed and errors are being made in the data. The nurses are overwhelmed. It's not very clear exactly who is, when you come back to school, when you're supposed to wear a mask, who's going to be tracking that? I don't think the logistics are going to make it work. And at one point, when it doesn't work, are you going to extend masking through K through twelve? Because the data shows, O D H shows, and that we're in a surge right now. We're in another surge and it's unfortunate that I, I fell out of work today. You know, I came home and I showered. I take off my scrubs and I shower because I don't want to get my family sick. And I've been following the O D H recommendations from the beginning. So I've been following this very closely and I will be looking at the data. And I, I just want to make sure that everybody's safe and protected right now when the numbers are so high. Maybe we can try this pilot program later in the year when we're not in a surge. I think it's inappropriate to do that right now when everybody's stretched so thin and our teachers and our principals have been doing the best job to keep our kids safe. So my question to you is when it doesn't work?
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on this topic?
So, Jeff Lawrence, we're in Kirk County. So here's what the truly baffling thing to me is regarding this pilot. You mentioned the numbers of quarantine students that were so, so high that Lebanon, they had to lose them. And I'm very serious, very serious. I want my, my son in school. I want my, I want all our kids in school. But all Spring Grove and Lebanon and the other school districts in Orange County have to do to keep them all in school if they're in this case of an epidemic is require masks. By their own, the old protocols you discussed last month, that's all you needed to do. So why go through this struggle? Why create a pilot? Why not just require masks? That's my question, there's some...
Hi, I'm Shana Agribia at one twenty Clearview Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you, Mr. Hook and the board members for my work. I really appreciate it. I know it's a difficult time right now to make a lot of decisions. I am a social scientist and so part of my job is to design experiments. And I have concerns about this pilot study because I'm not really sure what the data points are, what the goals are. When I design a study, it's reviewed pretty thoroughly. I have to get it reviewed by the institutional review board. If it's involving children, then we have specific expertise on that. And I am not hearing specifically what we're looking at, what the points of data are, how we're going to be able to say this is a success, this is not. And I understand it's, it's up to the Department of Health. But this is also my child's life. I have two kids who are under twelve, so they cannot be vaccinated. And so I have concerns about what you guys are trying to look for in order for this to be successful. So I'm going to ask for you to think really long and hard about what you want this to look like and realize that there's child's lives who are part of this. Thank you.
I'm working with Brian Reider for the chair of the address. I have three questions. One, the teachers, teachers and staff in school are going to be the ones that have to maintain and control this data. You have a nurse that's coming in, which is great, but ultimately, like Ms. Pap said, it's going to come down to the teachers to, to control this. Have the teachers even been asked their opinions on this pilot program? Have they been polled? Do we know what their opinions are on this? Second question is, from a parent's point of view, we get this letter from the superintendent saying that he and eleven, I think it's eleven school districts in this area, have signed this pilot program idea to send to the government, to send to Noyan. How can he just make a decision to send that without any kind of review from the board? I don't know if the board discusses it in those meetings or the non-monthly meeting. But from a parent's point of view, that's what it seems like happening. Lastly, my girls are juniors. Seven through twelve grade is without masks. Are my girls controlled in this experiment? Because it seems like it. Any, no answers to it? Okay.
My name's Shane Hunt, I just live over here in Heatherwood. I really wasn't prepared to speak, but... Hey, I got it, okay? Don't, don't you help me, you're out. Really appreciate it. Just need your address. Oh, okay. Shane Hunt, sixty-five, Marley, four five zero six six. Need the house caller? We're good. Okay. I'm not here to, you know, we all have different opinions and that's fine. And I really wasn't prepared to speak, so we can go different routes. But I do have a question, what if this doesn't work? We need to know what the plan is if it doesn't work because that's the end of the day. I have to tell you what's going to happen. We're going to be in the same spot we've been in for the last eighteen months. We have to stop getting mad at each other and start looking at how everyone is acting. The director of the NIH first came out at the very beginning, said, we don't need to wear masks, they don't work. We haven't worn ever. So why now? Then it was, you have to wear it, you don't have to wear it, now you got to wear it too, now you don't. And they're not even monitoring the vaccinated people. Those are, they're contributing to the D R stuff too. When we leave this school, everyone takes their masks off. Some people ride around in the car, they get home, they take their masks off. I hang out with doctors and nurses all the time, they take their masks off. So they really don't work as much as they say they do. So what's going to be the point when we find out when this is done? What are we going to do? Because we're going to be in the same boat because they keep moving the goalposts. It's time to start looking at people's actions and not what that TV is telling us. If you do your own research on the doc dot websites, it contradicts every single thing that they're telling us. And I know all of you are amidst pressure and I know half of us here have different kinds of views on each other. But we have to start looking at the laws and saying, you know what? It's not about what I think, it's not about what TV thinks. The science is getting changed all the time. They're literally changing the definition of the vaccine. So what are we going to do in three months from now, six months from now, when we're in the exact same spot? If masks truly worked, this thing would have been eradicated last year when everyone wore it and everyone stayed at home and everyone shut down. That's the reality. I understand there's probably no right or wrong answer, but we have to keep our kids safe. I agree. But it's about our freedoms. Every, I see people in masks, good, I support you. People without masks should be supported too and kids shouldn't be forced to wear them. So it's about time we stop saying, hey, a mandate is not the law. What are we going to do in three to six months from now if we're all told, oh, this was a joke? When we get to follow the law? Because the people sitting at this table are going to have some liability issues. And I don't want to see that happen. I don't want to see anyone sick. But there's kind of a guy say, hey, what is the true law? Not my opinion. So I hope this program works, but I have a gut feeling that we're going to be in the exact same spot three months from now, six months from now. And, you know, we need to start looking at the true law and we need to start pushing back at people. I'm happier with Noyan, you know, but his record's not so good. So we just need to think about this. Thank you.
Stephanie Bendeman, thirty-five, Fry Court. I want to rephrase the question again because some people have gotten their questions answered when they've come up here and others haven't. So I think that some of us that have asked the questions need answers too. Who is going to make sure the kids that are supposed to wear the masks are wearing the mask? Five years ago, I would have said, it's not a big deal. You tell my kid to wear a mask, he'll wear a mask. That's not how America works anymore. Nobody believes in the greater good. How many people do you know that were supposed to wear masks that haven't? People that were not vaccinated, we're not supposed to, we're supposed to not wear masks. I know a lot of you that never wore a mask. So let me ask you one more time. Who in this school is going to say, Mason Bendeman, who's my son, you have to wear a mask because you have come up on the prototype or protocol or whatever you want to call it? Who's going to tell Mason Bendeman that he's got to wear a mask? Who's going to say, Bendeman, get your mask on? Mom's not going to be there to do it. So the teachers are going to be okay to do this? Who is going to do it? If we're going to start this on Friday, we don't have an answer yet? It's Thursday?
It's not this Friday.
Okay. We haven't worked this one out yet? That seems the most simple thing of the whole program. So nobody has an answer for me? You know, in the past, we didn't get to ask questions and get answers from the board, but today you did. So you could let other people, so I went to too.
Yeah, I can answer that. So it's in our discretion if you want to answer questions.
Yeah, I can answer that. So it's in our discretion if you want to answer questions or not. You know, we talked about the line earlier, so I mean, it's up to us if we want to do it or not. I think in good faith, Mr. Hook is trying to finalize the details here. And certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hook, we'll send out details to parents prior to this going on. And correct me if I'm wrong, this is actually an optimum pilot, because I've heard.
It's an optimum pilot.
Okay. So those details are forthcoming. We'll get to the parents.
Okay, just as long as you've worked this out, because that to me, from setting back here, not understanding really what's going on, that to me is the weak part. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to item 3.3, committee reports.
Thank you. Met last week with the DNI committee. And just a real quick overview. We have presented the mission statement, which feels pretty solid for our DNI committee, which is Springbrough School Diversity and Inclusion Committee, works with administrative faculty and staff to create an inclusive, respectful, positive environment free from discrimination, racism, bigotry, harassment, bullying. So that was the, oh, that's the actual statement for that. We broke up into two groups, because we really feel like the next piece is developing an internal, an internal ambassador group, which are made up of staff representing each building, trying to identify what that would look like. What would be the commitment for a teacher or staff or someone to be in there? A year, two years, you know, what, what kind of commitment, who would want people coming in and out of that committee? What we're looking for, looking for people that are good leaders, solid people, that are understanding, willing to listen, reach out to new teachers into the district, be willing to share experiences, et cetera. Be available to students, you know, a safe place, somebody that they can connect with. Exact numbers for this group just depends on the grade level, which probably the high school will probably have more, anywhere from two to four per building. Figuring the elementary's probably would need less. But then that would be that internal group of, you know, no more than 20. Kind of working on that a little bit, what that number would look like. It's a lot easier in kind of following a train to train, train to trainer model. So that we have a core group of people that become experts, so to speak, ambassadors or champions to help all our students and other staff members. Still waiting on that, I'm working on that piece. The other group talked about, and I wasn't in that group as much, there's been much done there. But that was kind of seeing, what do we feel that the oversight of the DNI, oh, let me go back to the group. Also talked about potential brand opportunities. I believe there's some options out there. How we may are able to share that vision statement, the buildings, and yet create a vision where we're caring and respectful for one another. That group would meet periodically. We would decide whether it's monthly, quarterly, whatever that, that may be. Would meet with assistant superintendents and myself to make sure that we're staying on course. And would share out with the bigger group periodically. The other group was tasked more with kind of the over, what, what's the future of the DNI kind of committee in itself. You know, I think a bigger issue, and again, I wasn't involved as much. You probably had a little bit more with that.
Yeah, I mean, there were a bunch of specifics talking about things like the, the calling ambassadors or champions. That's sort of a big part of it, creating a resource within each of the buildings that are safe for certain students that they can approach if they have some issues. But we talked about a variety of things, but I think sort of the overarching theme, again, this needs to come back to sort of the whole group for discussion. But I think sort of the overarching theme, you know, probably for, for this academic year with regards to what, to what the group was talking about, was just continuing to try and increase the visibility and awareness of it for DNI and our school community, and that includes the committee itself. I think that was a point that, you know, there's some education that the members of the committee itself, you know, that we want to make sure that we're sort of able to speak on a variety of different topics. And so that was sort of the overarching theme. Again, the role I had for an idea is thrown out about what the DNI committee can do over time. But I suspect that some of that is going to have a bit longer tail and that, you know, so the initial focus is just going to be more on sort of education and increasing visibility and awareness.
All right, any comments from the rest of the board on the DNI committee report?
Our group is also working on sending an email back and forth, just confirming what that would look like for staff that's interested. So hopefully, if they're all staff, they can, that can be part of, they would have an opportunity to learn more, see if this is something that they're interested in participating in. So kind of like what Mr. Hook had said about, I don't know if it's a job description, but a description of what you're committing to, so they know what it, what it's going to entail. So we had to play count that down. So we're still in communication about that. But we're hoping to have that together so that they can talk through that at their October day, October 11th, I think. So that they can then maybe go ahead and take some steps forward with that.
Okay, I think, Mr. Ben, any comments on the DNI committee report? We have to look at the board house, right?
Sorry. I don't think there was any other ones.
Okay.
No problems.
There's a.
Go ahead, sir. No fear for this. Thank you.
Jay Phil Petrie, 20 Cascade, Springbrough. So with the DNI committee, my only question is being, as the old saying goes, nobody wants to watch the sausage being made, they just want to eat it. Well, the DNI committee is what was this meeting tonight. This is very important sausage, so a lot of us do want to watch it being made. When is the DNI committee's meetings, when are they going to be held publicly? Because we're using public funds to hire consultants and then you've got a select group of people meeting. They're obviously meeting because they've made a vision statement. When is that going to be held? That's my question.
You want me to, I actually like to just, please, because it's come up a couple of different times, so all of my opinion.
James.
Oh, sorry, forgot to turn my mic off. Because this is something we, we wrestled with sort of early on and I think it, important clarification, it's a superintendent committee, not a board committee. And so, you know, there is no sort of requirement from the ORC that it's, that it's held publicly. But, you know, obviously, we're not, we want to be as transparent as possible. And for me, what I struggle with is that we have a lot of students in the committee that share their experiences. And what I wrestle with is if that meeting were to be open to sort of the broader public, whether it would, we would get some of the honest conversation and the openness from those students in that setting. Just because I, I'm not sure that all the attendees would necessarily be there in good faith. And again, if the board participant or member is, or reader is, because it is a superintendent committee, there's no action can be taken. Everything has to come back to the full board. It is sort of a committee to, you know, to have this conversation, but, you know, it has to come back to the full board for any action. So I, it's, again, just something for me personally, I think I did sort of struggle with, but that's still.
Captain, please.
Rob Tuttle, 8764, Kristen Lane, here in Springbrough. I, I want to commend the, the board on the direction of the DNI committee. As you all know, I was very concerned early on. I think there's, we would still like to see what's going on with the committee. And I agree with the gentleman that spoke earlier, and we've been asking for it to be transparent. Mr. Habby talked about transparency earlier with data. I think this is a situation where there are a lot of people in the community that are very interested in this topic and would very much like to see the sausage being made. To the point about the students, I, I think one of the things you've got to see is that in previous meetings, including tonight, there have been students that have stood up at this microphone on video and spoken very passionately about their beliefs. So I don't believe there's any indication that students on the committee would not be willing to, to speak likewise. Another idea might be, for the sake of transparency, is to video the committee meeting and make it available. People don't have to be in the meeting itself to see what's going on. So they can see what was happening without interfering in any way with the, with the meeting. So I think that transparency is important. I think this is a very important topic and there are a lot of people in the community that would like to see what's going on in that committee. Finally, as far as the superintendent's committee goes, I understand, and I've checked into it very thoroughly, that a superintendent's committee is not required to meet the same sunshine law requirements as other committees or organizations are. However, that doesn't mean it's right. So just because you don't have to, doesn't mean you shouldn't. And so I would ask the board again to reconsider making these committee meetings open to the public in some form, so that we can see what's going on. I noticed that the minutes of the meetings have also been taken down from the website, previous meetings. There were minutes of the DNI committee on the website previously and I have not been able to find the previous minutes. And I've not seen any minutes from these two most recent meetings. So again, just asking for transparency in this committee. Thank you.
Jeff Asher Juhannes, 1612, Seaford Drive, township. Thank you for providing your report on the efforts of the DNI committee. It sounds, listening about the ambassador program and training individuals within our schools to help students of a variety of backgrounds. That sounds to me kind of aligned with one of the commitments that the support members made to Peacock regarding the liaison in their schools. So I wanted to ask if anybody could fill us in on that connection or not. I also want to say, as far as transparency, obviously, I think the DNI committee, the superintendent has to make a decision about what's best for the committee members, and in particular, for the committee members. And from a personal response, I would say, you know, video might not be a bad way to go about that. All the more so because it can be trained to show your, your, in such a meeting. But a way that people see what's happening, conversations with them without compromising any of the students' assistance in the mission. Thank you.
I, in the same way that Jamie just responded, I would like to, or liaison with the PIPAC. I think that's a good, that's a fair question. And I think that it is very similar to what the request for a PIPAC was, to have that connection point at each building. And I think you and Mr. Tuttle both make a very good recommendation of the possibility of, of taping. And because it does give the opportunity that if there is some information that a student would like to share, but retract so that it's not out there for everybody, we have that opportunity to do that. So I think that's a very fair recommendation to make and I would like to have considered. So I would have had no issues with that.
So with that, committee and Mr. Hook's, I would, I guess I'll hand it back to Mr. Hook and then Mr. Ben and Mr. Laje. Just figure out the logistics of how to do that. I certainly have no concern for that either, I guess. Mr. Asher James, that's a great point. You know, we can always kind of slide camera or just kind of ask things that, you know, let, kind of let the students opt in, you know, if they want to. So I'll leave it up to you guys kind of to figure out clearly with, with your workings. Try to figure out some of the microphone stuff. I think that's a great idea. I think that probably helps solve a lot of the things happening. Okay. Any other comments on the DNI committee for tonight?
Positive thing to come out of this evening, everybody.
Okay, we are, actually, I'm going to go ahead and recess for 30 seconds. Mr. Laje has a lot of things to get to. This is, we're in the talking season, so we're going to recess for like 30 seconds and just let it, just get out of here. Use your restroom. So we're going to, we're going to start with section four, the Treasury Board, and item 4.11, this is the approval of the August 2021 financials. Let's face it, flowers.
Thank you. I'm actually a separate, so I'm trying not to take too long. The detailed financial collection of August 2021, we'll post it to board docs for anyone to see. So if anyone has any questions on what we posted, you can let me know. Just a few highlights, we received $2 million in tax advances in the month of August. We actually logged a receipt of $70,000 in September, but this is just for August financials. So just under 1.4 million in state funding for the, for the month and $315,000 in miscellaneous revenues, which were mainly school fees, state fees, cart and passes, items like that. Our expenses through August are running as normal, as I would expect. Typically, we're front-end heavy for our supplies and capital needs, because we purchased most of those items before school starts. The capital projects are usually done in the summer and then those bills start rolling in in July and August. So typically, our expenditures are higher in those months and then they start to taper off. That's what we're seeing this year as well. We did have some software renewals that were paid out in August, $92,000, which kind of pushed our supplies up even a little higher than normal, but they'll just be lower in September. So we drew August close, we closed with $15 million in cash on payment, which takes about $161,000 a day for us to educate students, which equates to about 94 days of cash on payment when we close August. So that is basically means that for some reason we weren't to get any more money in, we would be able to allocate that four days. That's what that means. So that's item 4.1. Item 4.2 are our permanent appropriations that are due to the county auditor by October 1st. We've been running off a lot of temporary appropriations that are going through in June. And that just allows me time to get all of our permanent appropriations for all of our funds to the county auditor to let them know our expenses will not exceed these amounts and that we have the available cash on hand to be able to allocate those expenses. So that's item 4.2. Item 4.3 is something that I haven't done before yet, but I was actually talking to Scott Gilbert, our new executive director. He said that they did this getting ready and I knew it was a great idea. It's actually approval of our, all our district clubs and charter organizations. The board has approved each one of these at some point in history. So it's just a nice way for each year for the board to be able to see all of those support organizations. We don't have to think back to make sure it was an approved organization at some point. So I like the idea of that, so I'll add that annually. So this will be the first time. So you can see a list of all of the different clubs and support organizations we currently have in our districts. Item 4.5 is an approval of a donation of $13,000, $925 for the Springbrough Boosters to be used for traffic equipment. And then item 4.6, a donation of $1,000 from the Springbrough Boosters to be used towards junior bike competition share. And we need to separate a report on all of these items.
Item 4.7.
On item 4.7.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, so item 4.7 is the approval of items 4.1 and 4.6, kind of what should it be?
Seven.
Any discussion? Okay.
De Anderson.
Yes.
Bad, yes, Dookie.
Abstain.
Good.
Yes, yes.
And then also by item 4.8, an approval of a donation of $500 from the Springbrough R2C boosters to be used towards, to be used towards the RACI members. Item 4.9, approval of donation of $1,000 from Side Effects to the Lloyd Kempf Scholarship Fund. And then item 4. And then item 4.10, approval of donation of 12 soccer balls, $120,000, and a non-discovered T V, the Dennis Elementary.
Okay, 4.11 is the approval of items 4.8 through 4.10. Can I motion please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll go to, hold on.
Yes.
Bad, yes, sticky?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Okay, session five, the superintendent's report, Mr. Laje, 5.1.
Yes, need approval for the 13 policies that are here. Normally, they are, you know, required to have a two hearing, except that's under, all we have to do here is we're changing the names, a couple of names, the policies do not change. So it does not require some readings. So just to people that were on there, no longer here. And so Scott, he's been designated as that person in those policies. So need approval for those changes, those 13 policies.
Okay, can I motion for item 5.1?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hold on.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad, yes, sticky?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, session six, the superintendent's report, Mr. Laje.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I present the September personnel report, 6.1.
Sorry, I'll make sure. Okay, item 6.1, can I motion please?
Subwoo.
Second.
Hold on.
I have, I have two questions. Or do I do that?
Yep, no, they should.
Okay. So my one question is, it's really not directly for you. I, something else piqued my interest to look into this. So I had reached out to Mrs. PC and I had to go to the contract to figure this out. Way back, I don't know, probably when I was first aboard, remember, we used to list out the cost of each supplemental. So we knew, once again, to transparency, what it is that we're paying. It's difficult to know. Like right now, it looks like a lot of supplementals, and I know we only do this once a year. But I'm just curious if we can put the cost of each supplemental. I think they should be receiving these supplementals. I support that. I'm not questioning that. But just so that we can know what it is they're getting for these supplementals, would we be able to add that to this document? I mean, this is just a document for the treasurer's office for the auditors to, within the personnel pile of each person on here is the nomination for with that amount in there. But like to what we're looking at as board members, so we know what we're putting in. Because I've, I've questioned many times when I'm looking at this, how much am I approving when we have that many supplementals? We used to do it way back, two or three.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I mean, we can actually add that. I mean, that's, I think we used to have it on there and I think they said we didn't need it. I think that's why it wasn't on. So there was a couple of calls that have actually changed on there. I can't remember if they all are, but.
I just had never really noted until I looked today and it's difficult to try to reference it and look. So it was just a, it's nice to know what it is that we're approving, because at any point, I remember when we were looking at the eighth grade supplemental, that trip we did question because that was, for some reason, we actually saw the amount and it felt like that, didn't really feel like that was the right amount. So I'd like to know what it is I'm voting on, not just the position, but also that piece. If we could add that.
And these are standardized supplementals in the negotiated contract.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it still would be nice to know what it is that we're, that we're paying for. Another question was, I saw that we had some bus driver resignation, and I also saw the governor's thing with the National Guard. Is that a possibility here that we could potentially use some of the National Guard unit if we get into an issue with the bus drivers?
You know what we know.
Yeah.
It kind of comes off the roof.
It's a whole of the train, so.
I don't know if it's possible.
Properly licensed. I don't know. They would have to have background checks, the whole nine yards. So just because he says that, I don't know how viable that would be. We would have to definitely look into it.
It would come down from the governor of how to do that, but then would we be open to it if, if it was like a legit thing? Because it sounds like they've done it in other states. I called my son, he's married. I'm like, can you guys do this? But he said that that was like a governor thing per state and then it was like two years later that they said that the line was calling them up. So I'm just here trying to think outside the box here so that we don't have to close down the school also. I don't know. I would just, I would love to see that explored if it was an option. It sounds like they're encouraging the National Guard to get trained for the districts that are experiencing that. And when I saw that we had another resignation and knowing that you guys had shared that we were already so tight. My last thing was, are we definitely going to Camp Kern? Like as a date trip?
Yes, we are moving forward with that.
It's a date trip.
Oh, it's not overnight. It's day, it's not overnight. Great, okay, okay. That was it. Thank you.
There's no one in the National Guard.
Hey, guess who got it off?
They may show up on our door and, oh. Since they drive those.
They drive tanks. I figured for like a whole.
Can I motion please?
Which one are we looking at?
6.1.
I'm still wrong.
Hold on.
Yes?
Bad, yes, sticky?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, okay. Item 6.2.
6.2 is the athletic report, followed by the camp club report, 6.3, and then 6.4 is our pay schedule that you prove every year for game workers.
Okay, item 6.5 is the approval of items 6.2 through 6.4. Can I motion please?
Seven.
Second.
Discussion?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad, yes, sticky?
Abstain.
Yes?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Director of Special Education, description.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I am requesting approval for the two contracts that are in your board agenda tonight for student services.
Okay, can I motion to approve item 7.1?
Second.
Questions, comments? Hold on.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad, yes, sticky?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Item 8 is the board member's board's comments, questions. So we'll start with this back this evening.
I have a few things. First, I was wondering why I'm a parent who junior hired. We were getting so much information around this test that came home yesterday, test results. And I was thrilled to learn that the students are going to be doing this four times and they're using that data to adjust what they're doing to meet our kids' needs. So kudos to whatever we're doing with that. I was just, that's super exciting to me because we're really getting kids exactly where they're at and looking at it mid-year. So it's frustrating when you get these end of year results and then the kids are already gone. So thank you for, for that. Just wanted to send condolences to the Prince family, since they're one of our families here. I know many, many people were connected to them and just prayers and condolences go out to them who lost their dad and husband. I guess a lot of thoughts go into this. Encouragement to all of us, and this is to myself included, of just showing grace to people and knowing that we're all going to have bad days and say things that maybe we didn't need to say and do things we didn't need to do. We're not always going to be on our name, especially during this time. I think that I've seen it at home, at work, in the district, that it's just a difficult, difficult time. And I think that we as board administration need to do everything we can to build trust and to, and hopefully you all have the faith that we are going to take care of your children and do the best to keep them safe and educate them in the best way possible. And then also for, we would ask that you show grace also knowing that there's going to be some bumps along the way from the board, from administration, from teachers, from bus drivers, from everybody, because it's just a rough, it's just a tough time. All of us are gonna, are gonna say or do something sometimes that you reflect back and you're like, eh, might not have been my best, my best move. So I've been on both sides of that and it's just tough. So the last thing was kudos to the high school, to the students that helped pull this off and to Mrs. Aston and to Mr. Mark who went homecoming this past weekend. That was just a cool, cool thing to be able to have homecoming on our football field. It was neat to see and I heard on one of the local pages, like, what's all that music going on at the high school? And they could like hear, feel the beat from the neighborhoods close by, but it's just neat to see our students having the celebrations and just in a different way. And I'm sure it was a lot of work for everybody. I thought by Saturday morning, it was just so cool to see the excitement from everybody, but it was a lot of work for everybody, I'm sure, that was there. So just kudos for thinking outside the box and still giving our kids that experience of homecoming.
That's what I was going to say. Everything I've heard about the homecoming was very positive. A lot of thank yous from the neighborhoods for the free concert. I don't, I don't know that we want to make this a regular thing. Hopefully, we can get that inside at some point. But no, it was, it was very.
I don't have anything other than thanks to everybody who came out tonight. It's nice to, nice to see, maybe not 125 people, but at least, you know, interest from the community and things that are being discussed because I agree that I think these are good meetings. It's good to hear everybody's, everybody's opinion and how they feel about it.
Again, thanks to everyone for making homecoming happen. That was a great event, good buddy, so. But no, it's amazing we made it happen and it's actually probably extra cool that it happened on the football field. We should put it on sometime. Cool, that was nice, cool. Want to say thanks to the community. It's probably, many people saw on social media, we had 10 new buses rolling this week. And that is thanks to the fact that we passed our P I love you. So that is big. I can't tell you how kind of at the back end of our fleet, we've been kind of, I think we're still part of the buses, right? Yeah, so, you know, that's, that's pretty huge and these are nice new buses, you know, I mean, it's probably not the sexiest thing in the world, but I think you're light years ahead of the ones we're replacing. So that is really, really huge. So again, thank you, the community for supporting that P I love you. We're going to keep going with these types of things. You know, as you probably heard, the grand P I love you were kind of backloaded, quite frankly, with permanent improvement payments that need taking care of, you know. A year ago now, we did a nice little window at the high school, for instance. So we're going to start accelerating that and, you know, again, that's, that is big and makes a difference in all of our students' lives. So again, nothing else. Thank you, the community, for supporting that. And then finally, I do again, want to acknowledge the fact we staffed Mr. Hook for, you know, going forward with the pilot and proposing it, working with Ohio Department of Health, Warren County Health District, Governor's Office. In my day job, I worked with both Governor's Office and the Ohio Department of Health, and they're not the easiest organizations or, they're not easy to navigate. So the fact that we are here with a pilot and I can tell you, it has been vetted by the stable. I mean, there ain't no way that something this big comes out from the Governor's Office without them thoroughly looking into it. And again, I think it's great that, that we're a part of this because this really could make a difference. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll obviously get everything worked out before we launch this. Certainly, that's a great point. I totally agree. But again, back to Ms. Babs, kind of about the race. Let us have the remaining time to work that out, make sure our communication is personal to the parents. And, you know, I'm excited to see us making a step forward there. So thank you. So I think with that, we can adjourn. I didn't push to adjourn, item 9.1.
Subwoo.
Second.
Yes.
Bad, yes, sticky?
Yes.
Yes. We're adjourned, thank you.